Good evening, everyone. The November 12th, 2024 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order at 5:30 PM. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. I'll now read our board commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a pitch form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Good evening, Board Clerk. Please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Board of Directors, District 2.
Here.
Board of Directors, District 3.
Here.
Board of Directors, District 4.
Here.
Board of Directors, District 5.
Here.
Board of Directors, District 6. Sanjay Karthik, Vanguard High School.
Here.
Board of Directors, Superintendent.
Here.
Board of Directors, School Board of 10.
Here.
Thank you, and good evening, Dr. Gullett. Please introduce the member of your staff who will provide us with the inspiration and lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair members of the board. As you know, my voice is still struggling a bit, but it's my pleasure to be here tonight. Introduce Mr. Carlisle with somebody very special that sits up here with you, board, for tonight's inspiration and pledge. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair. Good evening, Board Chair, Thrower, School Board Members.
Not yet. You're not on. Ooh, that sounds promising.
Test, test.
We have an extra. It's the board rep. There's always an accommodation.
Yes. Good evening, Board Chair, Thrower, School Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Coming off a great Veterans Day ceremony yesterday, we thought it was timely to have a member of one of our outstanding JROTC units join us tonight for our inspiration and pledge. With me here, I have our Student School Board Representative, Sanjay Karthik from Vanguard High School. Sanjay's here. I want to briefly introduce him. Sanjay is currently a senior at Vanguard High School in the IB program where he has a perfect 5.0 GPA. Sanjay has been an active member of the Vanguard Navy JROTC for three and a half years, and he currently serves as the Battalion Commanding Officer and Color Guard Team Commander. Sanjay represented Marion County as the Sunshine State Scholar during his junior year and has also participated in the Yale Young Global Scholars Program and the U.S. Air Force Academy's Summer Seminar. It is my honor to introduce you to Sanjay Karthik.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Gullett. So before I start the inspiration speech, I just want to give a piece of advice to any students listening in, to always take up every opportunity that comes your way because you might regret it if you don't do so. And JROTC was one of those experiences that I definitely would have regretted if I had not taken advantage of. JROTC is more than just a class. It is more than just a feeder into the military. Ultimately, it is a program that fosters the highest level of values within its students. I have had the opportunity to serve as the commanding officer of the Knights Battalion, having the responsibility of turning over 200 students into cadets, ones of character, leadership, and excellence. Being the product of the COVID era, I entered high school feeling isolated from my school environment and peers. Opening the door to the JROTC classroom was like opening the door to challenge and opportunity. Never holding a gun, I joined the air rifle team. Never being able to run far, I joined the orienteering team. Through these pursuits, I learned what it means to be on a team. I also recognized the value of serving my community. Watching the smiles of children and veterans alike inspire me to live a life of selfless service. For these reasons, I am currently applying to the United States Air Force Academy to take what I learned as a cadet and serve my country. As I close the door to the JROTC classroom, I'll never forget the experiences and opportunities I gained. Thank you. Now, would everyone please kindly stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated.
Thank you, Sanjay. I'm going to ask Sanjay to remain here at the podium for a moment, and I'd like to introduce the Senior Naval Sciences Instructor at Vanguard High School, Commander Stephen Davis, to come up for a special recognition. You didn't know about this. Tonight, we would like to share the presentation of a very special award from the Legion of Valor. The Legion of Valor of the United States is an organization composed of Medal of Honor, Distinguished Service Cross, Navy Cross, and Air Force Cross Award recipients. Annually, Navy JROTC senior instructors may nominate one cadet from their unit to the area manager for the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross. The area manager will then select the two most deserving cadets from all of his units and forward their nominations up the chain of command. Once approved, the selected cadets are presented with the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross to recognize achievement of academic excellence in naval science and academic subjects and to stimulate development of leadership. This year, we're proud to recognize Vanguard's Cadet Commander, Sanjay Karthik, with the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross.
My goodness, Sanjay, please stay right there. We're going to come down and take a picture with you, and before we do that, I heard you say, you know, as a COVID kid and needing to step outside your comfort zone, you know, when opportunity presented itself. And because of that courage, look at what you have accomplished. Getting nominated is one thing, but actually being selected for the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross puts you in very elite company, and thank you for the example that you're setting, not only for other students and obviously your very proud family, but for the whole community as to what can happen when you step outside your comfort zone and just do and go where you're being led. So congratulations again on behalf of this whole school board, and we're going to come down and take a picture with you if that's okay. Thank you. All right. Dr. Gullett, I think that we have two different recognitions to share this evening.
We do. Thank you, board. The first, I would have Kathy Adi come forward from Career and Technical Education Department. We have some very special guests here and some folks from our amazing team you can see in the front row, board, and she's going to introduce the Ocala Film Derby winners and the winning video, and I want to thank our teachers for all their hardworking making that event possible. So thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair Thrower, Vice Chair Conrad, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Tonight, I'm honored to recognize some of the students and leaders that participated in the Second Annual Ocala Film Derby. During the Film Derby, students from our middle and high school digital video programs participate in film workshops, including leadership sessions, acting courses, and receive internships from leaders within the film industry. This year, students were also able to attend a private screening of Tony Sperdakis's film Ezra with a question and answer session with Tony himself. The Film Derby culminates in students being assigned to teams with students from different schools and given only nine hours to create a film for a competition. Students are given three things they must have in their video. One is a line of dialogue, which this year was "Why'd you have to say it like that?", a prop, which was a red Stanley, and a location they must include in their venue, which this year was "The Horses Downtown." The films are judged and then actually played at the Marion Theater for their families and for community members. Tonight, I have a few different people to recognize. First, we're going to watch the winning video from the team "The Unknown Artist."
Everything just seems like it's falling apart. My mom's been getting worse and worse. These bills, they're piling up. And here I am, still jobless, unable to help my mom. My dad, what's his deal? Cutting me off and making me get this stupid job? I bet if my little sister was still here, they never would even have thought of doing This place is definitely a last resort. What's the point? My name's Riley Erdogan, and I was wondering if I could maybe get a job application here?
Sorry, we're not hiring, but I do know a place that is. If you'd be interested, I'd like to take you there later.
All right, that'd be great.
All right. Well, meet me in the square in like 30 minutes by the horse.
All right. Also, what's your name?
Lola.
Nice to meet you.
He's so driven. I wish I had the motivation like him.
She's so full of hope. Oh, hi, Lola. You're a Stanley girl?
Why did you have to say him like that?
Well, you seem so, like, well put together. It seems like you have it all.
Far from it, actually. But you ready to go job search?
Sure.
First place I was thinking of was actually Grandpa Joe's Candy Shop.
A candy shop?
Yep. Me and my sister used to go there all the time. Well, yeah. Anyways, let's hit it.
All right, let's go.
Yeah.
It's kind of chaotic in here.
Hey, look at this place. You'll enjoy it.
Imagine all the little kids running around just...
Hey, hey, hey. This is a job. You need this. Go get him, tiger.
Do you think I could get a job application?
Of course. How about we set you up for an interview right now?
That would be great.
Awesome.
Yes? Yeah?
And they were all giggling early because I announced their team name wrong, apparently. They were Team Love Works? Is that right? No. So it was "The Unknown Artist." Okay. So now, we're going to recognize the members of that team, and then we have two other groups to recognize after that. From Bellevue High School, we have Jonathan Ankrum. From Danelland Middle, Cheyenne O'Neal. From Forest High, Kelvin Omar Rivera Cruz. From North Marion High, Reese Courtwright. From Vanguard, Talia Parker. From Westport, Alyssa Schimborsky. And then I'd also like to recognize their team mentor, Brian Reed, and the teachers that assisted with their team, Joy Avery from Osceola and Travis Bennett from Lake And then if you guys want to stay up there, we have a couple more groups. We have another student from the Film Derby to recognize tonight. For the first time, the Film Derby gave out scholarships to some of the participating seniors, and it was really interesting. The way they chose the scholarship winners was the students participating in the Derby actually rated the seniors on their leadership skills and the things they saw during the Derby, and they actually chose the scholarship recipients themselves. So tonight, I'm excited to announce the lead scholarship winner. That was from Bellevue High School, Harper Bowman. She received a $6,000 scholarship from the Derby.
That's awesome.
Lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize the team of individuals who worked tirelessly for well over a year to put this event together for students. First, I'd like to recognize Ms. Lori Zink, who created and leads this event for us. And then I'd like to recognize her team, the Film Derby Committee, who is consistent of teachers and also members of the film industry here in Marion County. So tonight, we have Mike Palma, Andrew Opitz, David Guest, Marsha Dobinmeyer, Aaron Conrad, Frank Gallagher, and Travis Bennett. So this is a truly amazing event. If you guys haven't been out to see it, I highly encourage you to come watch the videos next year at the Marion Theater with us. And I'd like to extend a heartfelt thanks to everyone who puts this event together for our students and a congratulations to the winning team.
Here, here. Yes, so much thanks to everyone, and what an incredible team effort. It just must have been really fun. You've worked with other students that maybe you had never met before, is that right? Yes, and so just what that takes in terms of, you know, bonding with each other and learning each other's creativity and their comfort zones and how willing they are to step outside of them, you know, just all of those things. And then having the Film Derby being screened at the Marion Theater, which is so historic and a huge part of Ocala, and the adults that are so committed to the kids via this project and the scholarship money being earned, it's just incredible all the way around. And I can only imagine how proud your families are of you and everyone that has supported you, and it'll be kind of interesting to follow your paths and see if they take you, you know, into the film industry and so many opportunities. So thank you so much for coming before us tonight and giving us a chance to honor and congratulate you, and we definitely want to come down and take a picture. Ms. Zink, was there anything else you wanted to add?
Well, I would...
You could come over, go over to the microphone real quick. Yep. You're just such a catalyst.
I just think we would be really remiss in not recognizing our community mentors who are not here with us tonight because we've had, every team had a mentor that was from a local business that is in the video or digital media business. We also want to thank all the sponsors that came together, both scholarship sponsors and all the sponsors who helped us. I mean, this is a five-day event that we're taking care of 88 kids. So, and I also want to recognize our downtown and all the proprietors and all the people at Ocala Main Street and everyone who really helped put this together. I mean, it's a huge effort, and it truly is a community effort, big community effort. And we so appreciate the school system coming together and seeing how important this is and being a very big part of us as we grow. So thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. The network of support from the community is always a win for kids, so we will come down and take a picture with you.
Here we go, and one, two, three, a couple more. You got yours? Moms and dads?
Yes.
Great stuff.
Yeah.
All right. I think we have one more recognition, right, Dr. Gullett?
We do. I just want to add, if I could, Madam Chair, that that, seeing that in action is really a model program, the work that happens and the engagement of the students and the community. I thanked Lori before and thanked the teachers, but the students are so talented. They were getting recruited for jobs while we were there, so no surprise. So the final recognition board for tonight are, in addition to our amazing students, we have amazing talent in our midst, and so I'm pleased to introduce two new team members, and I'll have them stand when I announce their names. So the first, I am pleased to introduce Dr. Anisa Brockington, who is our new Director of Talent Management. To give you some background, she previously served at the University of Washington in Seattle. She was responsible for talent acquisition, employee engagement, and learning and development. And before that, she spent 18 years with, as the Director for Recruitment, Retention, and Compliance with Polk County Public Schools, so we are very pleased to welcome Dr. Brockington to our team.
Welcome and glad to have you on board.
And our next announcement and welcome tonight goes to our new Assistant Principal at Anthony Elementary School, Dr. Joyce Scott. Dr. Scott previously served as a Content Area Specialist at Danelland Elementary School. We wish her congratulations. Welcome to our team members.
Yes, thank you, and welcome, Dr. Scott. You're a thoroughbred now. Okay. Well, we will move into the recognition, not recognition, the donation portion of our agenda, and we always graciously acknowledge the following donations that are made to benefit our school's students and staff members, including $25,000 to North Marion High School from the St. Bernard Foundation Incorporated to be used at the principal's discretion to support students, faculty, and staff. $10,000 to Bellevue High School from Triple Crown Homes to be used to improve and update the athletic fields, courts, equipment, scoreboards, and facilities. $5,500 to Reddick Collier Elementary School from Edwin and Stephanie Waters to be used to purchase Myon for Reddick Collier Elementary School for the 2024-2025 school year. And finally, last but not least, $3,093.41 to Hillcrest School from Rack Room Shoes to be used to purchase shoes... to be used to purchase shoes and socks for Hillcrest students as a part of the Shoes That Fit program. And we just continue to be so grateful for the community's support, all days, always. Thank you. All right, Dr. Gullett, would you please make a recommendation on this evening's school board meeting agenda?
Certainly happy to. I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 12th, 2024 school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of the following items. D26.1, D26.2, D26.3, D26.4, D26.5, D26.6, D26.7, D26.8, D26.9, D26.10, D26.11, and D26.12 that have been placed under discussion, as well as C23.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 17th, 2024 special school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 17th Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22nd, 2024 school board meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Board Member Cummings? Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, five votes to zero. Ms. Martinez, would you please provide the proof of publication for tonight's school board meeting? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
Well, you need to speak into the microphone. Is it on? It's not working? Okay.
The notice for the November 12th, 2024 school board meeting ran in the Ocala Gazette on November 1st, 2024. The proof of publication has been attached in board docs under proof of publication.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening. Good evening, Attorney Powers.
Good evening and thank you. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the Procedures for Public Comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families is also strictly prohibited. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. John Nicholson.
Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, board. My name is John Nicholson, last name is N-I-C-H-O-L-S-O-N. This is my son, Joshua. There's something really going wrong with Joshua inside Howard Middle School. It's really frustrating and it's really hard to communicate. So I wrote it down this way. I can try to take the emotion out of it and be respectful and follow your rules. So these are my thoughts. The relationship between educators and students is the cornerstone of a productive learning environment, particularly during the formative years of kindergarten to 12th grade education. Trust is paramount, not only that the students who are navigating their academic and social landscapes, but also for the parents who want to ensure that their children are treated with fairness and compassion. Unfortunately, my experience with the staff at Howard Middle School has raised serious concerns about this trust, particularly in the light of the recent disciplinary action taken against my son. It is essential to address these concerns and advocate for an educational climate that forces respect, understanding, and justice. Trust in this contest is a two-way street. Young teenagers are at a critical stage in their development where they learn to navigate their complex social interactions and consequences of their actions. They need to believe that their educators are acting in their best interests, treating them with care and understanding, and providing them with a safe environment in which to learn and grow. Simultaneously, parents must trust their educators with uphold standards of discipline, equity, and judiciously. When this trust is compromised, the entire educational experience is jeopardized. The incident involving my son, who allegedly altered a teacher's paper, underscores a significant misalignment between the administration's approach and the principles of fairness, of progressive discipline, which is outlined in the Student Code of Conduct. The consequences my son faced one day of in-school suspension arose from an interaction that at worst was a misguided joke, not a serious offense. The label of 2A inappropriate behavior seems to be misenthusiastic, not only by the nature of my son's actions, but the context in which they occurred. It is essential to recognize that the application of disciplinary measures must be reflective of the actual behavior exhibited rather than a rigid adherence to punitive protocols. It is evident that the infraction reported by a teacher is incomplete and flawed. Notably, the first intervention lacked any details, leaving us without crucial information about what occurred and what steps were taken to prevent the recurrence of the behavior. As a parent, I require transparency and clarity to understand the specific actions I need to address at home. The absence of information undermines the collaborative effort that is essential for effective behavior correction. Furthermore, the report appears to contain fraudulent information as it contradicts evidence from the school's Skyward System and my son's account. For instance, there was no test on October 17th, the day this teacher alleged that my son was talking during a test. This discrepancy raises questions about credibility of the report. My son recalls signing the report only after this teacher stated, after the teacher stated that he was kicked out of the classroom, claiming that another student was giving him hand signs. Interestingly, Joshua stated that the other student was making sexual gestures which occurred on a different date than the one cited on this report. Such inconsistencies in this document suggest troubling patterns of misrepresentation and bias against my son. Additionally, Joshua recently reported another negative interaction with this teacher today. During... This teacher stated that Joshua put a Nazi symbol on his hand. This accusation is unfounded and easily disproven as the pen markings on his hands tell a different story. The fact that I felt compelled to check him out of school early without his prior knowledge speaks volumes about the distress he's experienced in this environment. Regarding to the second intervention, while it is inconsistent and flawed, it stated that Jo... Well, messed that one up, but it's okay. It's the same thing about him talking at a test when there was no test that day. So they're misrepresenting my son to have inappropriate behavior or negative behavior patterns, which they have no report. They sent me this classroom report...
Your term is expired.
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir. I just need to have this addressed. I'm going to end this right here. I just need somebody to help me address this situation. I tried to address it at the school, and it seems like things are becoming more retaliatory against him. And I'm lost words and I have no direction. That's all I have to say. I'm sorry for taking so much time.
Not at all. Thank you, sir, and appreciate you bringing your concerns to us. Dr. Gullett, is there a member of staff that may be able to assist? What?
Ms. Kinerd will be able to discuss things with you forward.
Thank you.
Mr. David Williamson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
David Williamson, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S-O-N. I'm here on behalf of the Central Florida Free Thought Community. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Interfaith Council of Central Florida and on the Commission for Religious Freedom of Central Florida. I want to again express my thanks to you for addressing the policy on volunteers at the last meeting first. It meant a lot to me to be home eight hours later and see you here still talking and me being gone. So much gratitude for that. And to the time you spent to discuss the issues that you yourselves had and that the community expressed. You're definitely not heading into this chaplain policy considerations unprepared. We all want the very best for Marion County students, and we all want to provide the best resources available to them to achieve success and make decisions with their interests and their safety in mind. The reason we've never before seriously talked about allowing clergy members into public schools is because it has been and remains fraught with complications. And I fully expect the First Florida School District that implements this policy to have to defend that decision in court. Governor DeSantis, the legislators that sponsored the bill, and those that voted for it, they won't be in court. And they won't be in depositions, and they won't have to write a check that covers the cost of that litigation. But how do we, as laypersons, know that this practice is unconstitutional? Of having religious clergy members on campus, outside of the extensive case law, that is? Well, first, if it wasn't unconstitutional, clergy would already be there. If it were permissible under the law, there would already be religious chaplains roaming the halls of public schools around the country, free to have private one-on-one conversations about religion in offices paid for by the public school system. No one has done this yet because they can't, not because they don't want to, and not because there wasn't a state law. State laws don't trump the Constitution of the United States or even a state's own constitution. In fact, state laws often run afoul of the state's own constitution. It's for the courts to work out, and that will be the case in this instance as well. It's unclear to me why your attorneys that you confide in aren't advising against this, or if they are advising against it in private, why you're going ahead with it. It is clear, though, why virtually no other school board is even discussing it. Only two have spoken of it at meetings. Miami-Dade hasn't talked about it since May, and Osceola voted three times not to do it as recently as last month. Your attorneys are giving you good advice about why you should not pick and choose your chaplains, and that's a concern that several of you had at the work session two weeks ago. Chaplains who apply will have no training, no certification, no qualifications, and don't even need to be a member of clergy. Everyone volunteering right now on MCPS campuses is eligible to be a chaplain, as is anyone who can pass an in-state-only, name-only, criminal background, and employment history check. No fingerprints. Please correct me if I'm wrong about that. No seminary training, no chaplain certification, not even an online hour-long course is needed. In fact, these volunteers, religious or not, Christian or not, can claim any religion they like. In fact, the way in the door, and to ensure parents give permission, is just to claim to be a Christian chaplain. Your superintendent says staff aren't qualified to determine training. Your attorney advised against making decisions as to whether someone's religion or worldview is appropriate for one-on-one contact with students. Either anybody and everybody who wants to be a chaplain is, or you don't approve any applicants by not having a chaplain program. I hope you'll choose the latter, because that's the solution that best serves MCPS students and keeps them safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Martinez?
Cassie Rivera?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, board. My name is Cassie Rivera, former Assistant Principal at Fort King Middle School, my last day being October 25th. I come before the board today with much disappointment in decisions being made within our district. I was raised in Marion County and I'm a product of the very system I worked for for 12 years. I started off as a substitute in 2012 and became a teacher in 2014, teaching for five years before moving into the Content Area Specialist role for two years, dean for two years, and now I just ended what would have been my second year as an Assistant Principal over discipline. Just over a year and a half ago, I sat before a final interview panel to become Assistant Principal and was asked by Superintendent Gullett something along the lines of, "Do you have what it takes to always do what's in the best interest for children, no matter the cost?" I knew without a doubt I could confidently say yes. Even though I've made the hard decision to resign, I'm here today to advocate one last time for the best interests of our children in Marion County, especially at Fort King. Just last year, as I sat as a new AP over discipline at a very high-need school with three brand-new deans and only two counselors, I knew we had a task to conquer, the very large task of turning the student discipline around. I immediately started diving into the discipline data, some very scary and concerning data, in my opinion, some of the highest and most dangerous in the district at that time. The same data that was a direct result of having only two deans on their staffing plan the years prior. With the extra support last year, we developed a strategic plan for each of the three deans, put structures in place, set up mobile offices in the hallways, taught and re-taught expectations, held students accountable, rewarded students who did well through PBIS, and built strong relationships through restorative practices. Two of my deans even wrote a grant called "Rolling for Success" in which every walking child would have the opportunity to rent a bike and then earn it through good attendance. Because of all of this, our discipline data dropped tremendously. Students were beginning to trust adults, and we saw a difference in the culture of our school. But our work wasn't done. We came into this year with fire in our hearts to continue to make a difference, even if it took exhausting days to feel the impact. With one of the highest number of ESE units in the district with students having individualized education plans and behavior plans and being under state watch for our ESE ESA group, we knew we had to come up with an even more targeted plan. Unfortunately, we started the school year with no behavior specialists, only half of our self-contained classroom staff as certified teachers, and no plan from the district on where we send ESE and 504 students under the 10-day rule for Level 3 and 4 incidents when awaiting manifestation meetings. Even with three deans and two behavior techs on our campus, our days were long and tiring. Just over a month ago, I received a phone call stating we would be losing four instructional units, one being a dean's position due to lack of enrollment. We didn't meet the numbers the district anticipated, so two months into the school year, we'd be losing a dean's position. Being Assistant Principal over discipline, this directly impacts my team and our daily work life. But those that made this fairly large decision never took the time to discuss what that would even look like and how much it would, in fact, negatively impact our school and culture. With all of us already worn thin, vital resources were stripped away overnight, even when clearly the needs were higher than the numbers. Yet we were still expected to maintain the same number and intensity of discipline incidents occurring on a daily basis. Our Fort King Middle School students and staff deserve the support and resources to continue the tremendous growth I've seen in just the one year I was blessed to serve Fort King. But it takes human resources. In my opinion, they need three deans and three counselors to properly serve the Fort King student population. But taking one dean may not seem like a lot to people who don't live the life... But taking one dean may not seem like a lot to people who don't live the life of discipline in a high-needs environment, nor have I seen on Fort King's campus, quite frankly, to even experience it in the year or so that I was there. But to us, it's like losing a pillar to our foundation that we took a whole year to build just for it to be torn away because our enrollment numbers didn't meet a certain standardized guideline, which I believe is one dean per 500 kids. And then to be told that our district doesn't have any additional funding to help keep our dean position at Fort King, but yet we receive an email days later stating the district miraculously has money and will be providing stipends to recruit and retain the best administrators whose school assignments meet certain criteria. Again, unfair and inequitably designed with no input from administrators, but that's for another day. Just note, Fort King was not on any of those lists. If the purpose is to retain, shouldn't we be offering all of our proposed stipends to all of our current administrators? Or are we only looking to retain certain ones? But I digress. Furthermore, the numbers that we need to be analyzing should be money and how we can allocate funding more effectively and equitably to support the needs of our schools on an individualized basis. Then we may see change. We are a school choice district. It's not equitable to allow privileged families who can provide transportation for their students to choose to have their students attend what they might perceive as the best school across town and then push all of our money and resources into that one school because their enrollment is the highest. Their numbers may be higher, but their needs may not. If we're asking our teachers to differentiate for our students, I would charge our district to differentiate for our schools, and that starts with funding allocations based on criteria beyond just basic enrollment numbers. Our students are not just numbers. I'll end by asking the Board, do you have what it takes to do what's in the best interest for our Marion County public school students, no matter the cost? We must consider their needs before their numbers. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Dr. Gullett, um, I would just like to request as the Board Member that represents Fort King Middle School, um, for one of the area superintendents that is assigned to that school, have additional conversation with Principal Carter just to get an update on where we are with that school and, and ensure that they have, uh, what's needed with these changes. Took a long way, you know, a lot of work to get to where we were last year and certainly want to see that success continue. So thank you for that. Any other speakers?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we will move on to our public hearing portion. May I have a motion to approve the rezoning for new elementary schools W and X?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. The rezoning for new elementary schools W and X will best serve students' educational needs and align the numbers of students with facility capacity to be in compliance with Florida Statute 1001 dot 41. Thank you.
Thank you. I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the rezoning of new elementary schools W and X? Hearing and seeing none. Is there any discussion from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor of the rezoning for new elementary schools W and X, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Moving on to informational items, the school district uses a construction management delivery method, including a guaranteed maximum price, known as GMP, to perform construction work on the following projects. To allow the district to purchase materials through the owner-direct purchase, OPD process, to save sales tax, the construction manager needs to return the funds to the owner via deductive change order. The superintendent has signed and approved the change orders. Per Board Policy 6345, the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract by $25,000 or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount, provided that approval will be, in her judgment, in the best interest of the Board. Such change orders will be binding upon execution by the superintendent. The superintendent shall report each change order that she approved to the Board at the Board meeting that follows her approval. Her approval of the change orders will be entered into the official minutes of the Board meeting. We'll go on to item 10.1, Guaranteed Maximum Price for Osceola Middle School New Gymnasium, Change Order Number Two, Amendment Number One, Project 24 dash 109. The next one is replacement of roofs at Buildings 18 and 24 at North Marion High School, Change Order Number One, Work Authorization Number Eight, Project 24 dot 125. Item number 10.3, Temporary Easement Associated with Construction of New Elementary School X for Installation of Water and Sewer Lines, Project Number 24 dash 102. The construction of new elementary school X requires the connection of water and sewer lines in the future right-of-way of the new road being construction, but, being constructed by KL Winding Oaks Company. This temporary construction easement allows the contractor to have access to the area to make the necessary installation and connection for the needed water and sewer line. The easement will expire on December 31st, 2026, or when a permanent right-of-way or easement is recorded in the final plat. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items C 12.1 through C 23.1, with the exception of Items D 26.1, D 26.2, D 26.3, D 26.4, D 26.5, D 26.6, D 26.7, D 26.8, D 26.9, D 26.10, D 26.11, and D 26.12 that have been placed under discussion, and Item C 23.1 that has been pulled and placed under discussion, pulled agenda items. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Second by Board Member James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Moving on to student disciplinary matters. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board Members have received the alternative placement list for students through October 4th, 2024. Ms. Martinez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of Student JD 25 dash 037E, JD 25 dash 071E, JD 25 dash 076, and JD 25 dash 077 without services for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first quarter of the 2025-2026 school year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad?
Second.
Was that Board Member Campbell? Thank you. Second by Board Member Campbell. All those in favor, say aye.
Um, discussion. Do you know we not discuss it before we talk about it? Or should I have pulled it to discussion? Because I'm not voting on it, so.
I have a motion second and vote.
Okay, that's my, I overlooked that if I needed to pull it to discussion to be able to say that I'm not voting on the item.
That's fine. Well, let's go ahead and discuss.
Okay, I just have a brief statement. So as a Board Member, I've been requesting a more sufficient progressive discipline plan that consistently outlines how a student will be disciplined for offenses that are of the caliber to deserve expulsion without services. Until I receive that consistent discipline progressive plan, I will be refraining from voting on students without services expulsions.
Okay. All right. Um, any other discussion from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. And the motion passes 4-1 with Board Member James abstaining.
Four to zero.
Four to zero with Board Member James abstaining. Sorry about that. All right. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of Student JD 25 dash 063E, JD 25 dash 066E, JD 25 dash 067E, JD 25 dash 068, JD 25 dash 069, JD 25 dash 070, JD 25 dash 072, JD 25 dash 074, JD 25 dash 075 with services for the remainder of the 2024-2025 school year and the first quarter of the 2025-2026 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. May I have a motion to approve the Grant Application Early Childhood Music Education Incentive Program? This is our first discussion item. Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. Dr. Gullett, you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, the cost for this item, should you approve it? $160,800. And Ms. Riedel is going to come forward. Um, there she is. And I just want to say, um, I want to extend my thanks to Senator Keith Perry, who has been a true leader. We appreciate his commitment to early childhood music education and with our students. And so, um, Ms. Riedel has some additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Riedel. The Early Childhood Music Education Incentive Program, established by Senator Keith Perry, was created to assist participating school districts in implementing and supporting comprehensive music education programs for students in kindergarten through second grade. Marion County Public Schools first participated in this incentive as a pilot and continues to participate since the bill was passed in 2023, establishing the program as a permanent statewide grant. Integrating music into curriculum helps students to improve engagement, language development, brain development, as well as fine motor skills. The Early Childhood Music Education Grant provide funds to, provides funds to purchase items such as instrument supplemental curriculum, technology, and professional learning for our music teachers. This year, participating schools include 8th Street Elementary, Fordham Early Learning, Oak Crest Elementary, Ocala Springs Elementary, and Reddick Collier Elementary. To be eligible for the grant, each school's comprehensive mus, music program includes all students at the school enrolled, enrolled in grades kindergarten through grade two, is staffed by a certified music educator, and they agree to provide music instruction for at least 30 consecutive minutes, two days per week. We are very excited about this grant this year, again. Thank you, Ms. Riedel. Appreciate that. Um, is there any discussion from the Board on this item? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Just wanted to extend, I don't know if, uh, Senator Perry has termed out, and so that was bad timing because it became our agenda item after the election, and it's just important to share thanks, um, at, at that level, um, for the foresight and, and the commitment to children and music education that Senator Perry had. And I also wanted to, um, say thank you to his, uh, former Chief of Staff and former School Board employee Suzanne McGuire, um, for, for her work on this as well. So if there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Grant Award for the Marion County Hospital District?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have something you would like to add regarding this item?
Yes, thank you. Also extending our thanks for another amazing partnership, uh, with the Marion County Hospital District. The cost for this item, Board, is $533,000, and Dr. Brewer is going to provide some additional information as we support healthy eating and fitness with our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair, Thrower, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. This evening, we are requesting your approval of the $533,000 grant award from the Marion County Hospital District that supports the continued work of our fitness and nutrition in schools. We call them teen, we call them fans in our schools. They increase, they are helping us to increase our physical fitness opportunities, improving nutrition, and educating students about healthy lifestyles. I would like to provide a couple highlights to you that the work of the fans has done this past year to support our schools. Fans has built a positive and effective working relationship between food and nutrition services and our secondary agriculture teachers this past year. Students are now exposed to healthy, colorful, fresh produce grown by students in their schools. The collaboration has raised awareness of healthy eating choices by putting fresh vegetables directly in the hands of students at lunchtime. It, this has reinforced the value of our shared farm-to-school initiative. Last year was a banner year for our farm-to-school program. Every secondary school contributed to the students and the community. This year, we have already crossed our goal of 50% harvesting and going into, with food going into the school's cafeterias. We have increased this harvest by 34% from this time last year. So we can't even imagine what it's going to be by the end of the school year. In addition, every middle and high school campus now has a fans club that meets after school. With the support of fans, teachers have also, fiscal education teachers have also been able to measure and compare physical activity with the student's overall health to make educated, effective decisions when designing and implementing the fiscal education programs through elementary through the high school levels. We also would like to highlight the work in the health area. The health educators pro, successfully have provided lessons on the importance of not vaping or smoking and the harmful effects on their bodies. And I would like to share a few numbers with you. The increase, the goal last year for our fifth graders and our health educator teacher was to increase that number, um, with visiting the elementary schools. She was able, and I say she, because we have one health educator at that time, Kristy Dixon, was able to present to 1,313 fifth-grade students and share the benefits of healthy lifestyles. She was able to meet with 2,941 eighth-grade students to provide the, um, benefits of anti-vaping and, again, making smart choices. And she also was able to support our supportive enforcement program, which is the new and improved diversion program. She was able to meet with 208 students last year with the supportive enforcement program. So we're thankful for the partnership, like Dr. Gullett said, with the Marion County Hospital District, and we look forward to continuing our work that benefits our students. Thank you, Dr. Gullett.
Awesome. Um, thank you. And I'll just say that, um, when you mentioned putting fresh vegetables into the hands of every student, I was thinking, even if they don't know what it is, because I had never heard of cold Robbie before. And it was, a student actually mentioned it to me, so they're, they're learning things that certainly a lot of us weren't taught when we were in school about the importance of healthy eating. So that, I just thought that was pretty cool. All right. Is there any additional discussion from the Board? Yes, please.
I'm just very excited. You know, Fans has a great Facebook page also. We can't be everywhere for every event, but they do a great job of sharing the exciting and fun things that they are doing. I did have a quick question. On the secondary level, do they work in partnership with the agriculture or is it total, a two-separate programs?
Oh, oh, yes, ma'am. They work directly there. Um, in the, Mr. Chris Roy leads the horticulture side of Fans, and he supports all of the agriculture, all the, um, all the shade structures, all the greenhouses. Um, he's very involved and supportive of the agriculture teachers.
Fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Brewer.
Any more discussion from the Board? Go ahead, Board Member Campbell.
Just a thank you to the Marion County Hospital District because $500-plus thousand just for this project alone, they, they are wonderful financial partners for us and just grateful for the work that they see us doing and how we align with their mission, because as we're educating students on how to be healthier individuals, that is going to be a long game for the Hospital District to make our community healthier, so.
Great point, Board Member Campbell. Any other discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, five-zero. Moving on to D 26.3, may I have a motion to approve the First Amendment between the School Board of Marion County and Cambridge Assessment International Education?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. And Dr. Gullett, you have information you'd like to share?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This item speaks, uh, board to one of our strategic plan priorities to increase access to rigorous courses for our students. Dr. Hamburg is here to provide some additional information. Uh, in order to try to do that, the cost of this is $900,000. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair, Thrower, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett. Um, I'm here to share with you how the improvement, uh, the approval of this agenda item would directly impact our schools and students and sharing some specific facts with you. So Cambridge courses are offered at So Cambridge courses are offered at all high schools, which provide rigorous, advanced coursework for students. We currently have thirty-three Cambridge courses with six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight enrollments in those courses. It's important to also note that the district earns weighted FTE funds for each student that is enrolled in a Cambridge course. And students who pass the International Cambridge AS and A-level exams are awarded college credit by a post-secondary institution, which then shortens the timeframe it takes them to earn a degree and saves them tuition dollars. High school students in Florida, who also earn a Cambridge ACE diploma and complete the other requirements, they qualify for the Bright Future Scholarship, which covers full tuition at any public Florida institution. Additionally, approval of this contract will allow Marion County Public Schools to continue to provide these robust opportunities for students, as well as support middle school and elementary students who are also using Cambridge curriculum at those school levels. This is beneficial to those students as well, because they learn the attributes of the Cambridge program in primary and lower secondary program, which helps support their future learning at the high school level in Cambridge courses. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hambrook. Any discussion from the board regarding this topic? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. It's worth almost a million dollars to continue to create these opportunities for our students, for sure. All right. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the discount catalog bids? Four zero eight seven A H art supplies and equipment, four zero eight eight A H science supplies and equipment, four zero nine one A H special needs and therapeutic equipment, four zero nine two A H teaching supplies, four zero eight nine A H physical education supplies and equipment, four zero eight eight A H music supplies and equipment, and four zero nine three A H vocational supplies and equipment, term contracts. May I have a motion, please?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The board, you've seen these items before for the discount catalogs. Ms. Boston Ellis is here tonight to provide some information for you and your consideration of this item as the discount catalogs help support the teachers and their needs. And the cost for this item tonight, for consideration, is approximately one point four million dollars. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Thrower, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. Item twenty-six four was moved to discussion so that we could provide additional information. If approved, the discount catalog bid will provide all the things that Chair Thrower mentioned, equipment for art, also science, special needs, and therapeutic teaching supplies, P E supplies, and equipment, music supplies and equipment, and vocational supplies. As Dr. Gullett mentioned, the estimated cost of this bid is one point four million, funded primarily from the general fund operating. For the current bid, one point one million has been encumbered to date. There are various vendors in the discount catalog bids, and this affords an opportunity to shop online. So how does this bid work? I'm glad you asked. Catalog bids are used in place of line-item bids when it is impossible to know or forecast what miscellaneous supplies or materials that teachers may want or need for their students in a given year. We utilize our discount catalog bids as a convenient way for teachers and staff to shop from multiple vendors who are awarded, vetted, approved by our system and our department purchasing. And this is like a one-stop shopping setting. We have several different specific catalog categories. Teachers and staff, again, can review all of the awarded vendors of a catalog bid and easily request quotes from multiple awarded vendors of each catalog. Many of the awarded catalog vendors provide substantial percentage discounts from their standard pricing, and the discounts could range from zero to fifty percent.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis, for that overview. Is there any discussion from the board? Hearing and seeing none. I just have one comment. I love the idea of the shopping online and making it accessible, and I was thinking about my Vice Chair to my right, you know, that I hope that the turnaround time, this really helps with turnaround time, because there's only a hundred and eighty days in the school year anyway. And, you know, getting the supplies to the teachers to get to the students is the name of the game.
Absolutely.
Exciting. Yes. All right. Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. Moving on to D twenty-six point five, may I have a motion to approve renewed bid four zero two six G M network cable installation services. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Cost for this item tonight, board, is three hundred thousand dollars. Mr. Ben Vanudie is back again this week to talk more about what we're doing in technology to help to meet the expectations and the needs of our district. Thank you.
Good evening, Board Chair Thrower, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Gullett. This evening, I'm requesting approval for our network cabling bid, sorry, forty-two six G M, which includes insulation services. The bid for low-voltage cabling insulation is essential, as it provides the backbone for systems that directly support safety and enhancing learning. Reliable cabling powers our critical infrastructure that supports security cameras, access controls, and alarms, which are all vital for maintaining a safe campus and environment. This network supports digital displays, interactive boards. In classrooms, cabling, teachers need to engage students with dynamic multimedia instruction. Additionally, high-quality cabling ensures fast, reliable internet service, which is crucial for both educational activities and administrative tasks. Importantly, this infrastructure positions us for future technology upgrades and increased device use, ensuring that we're prepared to meet the evolving demands of the district. As technology needs grow, our district will require scalable, adaptable systems that only robust, quality cabling can support. Approval of this bid allows us to build not only for the current requirements, but also for long-term, sustainable technological growth. Thank you for support.
Thank you. Always great to talk tech with you. All right. Is there any discussion from the board?
I just have a quick comment.
Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Mr. Ben Vanudie, I just want to say thank you for your continued work in this area. You know, even the short time since I've been out of the classroom, you visit, and if you can't access your technology, sadly, things really come quickly to a halt. So I just want to thank you for your work in this area. I know when you arrived here, we were behind. We have a lot of work to do. So thank you for continuing to plug away and moving us forward.
My pleasure.
Most of the time. All right. Is there any other discussion from the board? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. All right. Moving on, may I have a motion to approve the construction of an ADA chair lift ramps at Pheasant Inn Elementary School, change order number one, work authorization number ten, project two-three dash one zero three. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Dr. Gullett, you have information regarding this item?
Yes, thank you, board. I first want to let you all know that, board members, that the next four items, Ms. Boombach, who is standing before you already, is going to speak to. This first item, Ms. Boombach is going to provide some information on the structural needs that were identified during the demolition process at Pheasant Inn. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett. As you know, we are in the middle of installing an ADA lift at Pheasant Inn Elementary School. It is a very old campus, so it has quite some challenges for wheelchair-bound students. And we have installed a fence recently, which cut off the access that was used for the wheelchair-bound students before. They usually came out the front door, and then from there, they had an easier way to get to the buildings and the rest of the campus. Now, with the new fence installed, they would leave the secured area and would have to come out of that area and enter then back into the secured area behind the fence. So it was recommended to install that new ADA lift and also a ramp to keep the students and the staff behind the fence in the secured area. It is also a very old building, so we didn't have much existing drawings to go by to help us in designing the new construction. So when we started, or the contractor started digging and doing some investigative demolition, we found some areas that were of concern. One of them were the footings for the new canopy, and they were in conflict with the footings of the ADA lift. So we stopped construction there. We had the engineer come back out. We had conversation with the manufacturer of the canopy. They all came together. We worked through the problem, shifted some columns around and some footings. And then it had to go through the redesign of the manufacturer. They provide their footing details. So they needed all that information to move forward. So that took some time. They worked through those complications, and we have a design now. We can move forward. The other issue was, we had to provide a new entry door to that new ramp. So we started taking down the plaster and the tri-wall. And then we discovered that the wall that was built had no structural integrity. So to take apart out of there, to put a new door in, seemed very dangerous. And so we had a structural engineer come out for that as well. And we wanted to keep the look of the building, because it's a historic building. So we really wanted to keep the integrity of that look. So now we found a good solution. We keep that old window in there, and we keep that look. We're adding some steel columns to provide the structure that that door needs. And the architect redesigned all that, so we are all good to go now. But it did take some time, and they are asking for the additional time. I lost my track here, how many days we are asking for.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three days.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Was there anything else that you understood?
That wasn't there.
Okay, that was a mouthful. All right. Thank you. On this particular topic, board, any discussion?
I just have one comment.
Yes.
I just want to highlight that I feel like this is an opportunity to highlight that this is a change order of a timeline that is more than appropriate and necessary. The contractor couldn't have foreseen any of the things that they have come in contact with. There were no drawings even to reference regarding Pheasant Inn. So a change order like this, changing a timeline for the contractor so that they are not held accountable for the lost days, is more than appropriate, because they have encumbered unforeseen circumstances. That is, in my opinion, the opposition of what we see at North Bay and High School. So I just wanted to highlight that change orders, when appropriate, I'm completely in favor of. If it's something the contractor has faced that is not in there, any way they could have ever foreseen that. So, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion from the board, Vice Chair Conrad?
I just want to say thank you for the detail that you put into preserving the historic structure, because we do know that that's very important to the community on the north end of town. And so I appreciate the extra time and effort that went into preparing that.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion from the board? All right. Thank you for the presentation, and, yes, trying to preserve what just simply cannot be replaced is admirable. All right. There's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. We're on twenty-six point seven. May I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price, known as G M P, for Osceola Middle School new gymnasium, change order number three, amendment number one, project two-four dash one zero nine. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Board Member Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. And Dr. Gullett, you have information for this one?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Boombach has some information to share on this project, board. The cost is forty-two thousand dollars approximately. Thank you.
So this item is just like we discussed in the last board meeting. We had some issues with the process of the O D P order. And we are very excited to present in the next work session to explain to you how the O D P process works. And we have some ideas to present to you how we could change the process. So this vendor, Annexster, when we presented the deductive change order to pursue owner-direct purchase, it was shown as an active vendor, so we started to go ahead with the deductive change order. But then the statutes changed over the summer, and we needed a new vendor application. And they had to sign the new human trafficking affidavit, so that delayed that process. The gear package is a very critical component. We needed to order that right away to keep that project on track and to open the gymnasium for next school year. So that delay in getting that new paperwork, we could not wait to order that electrical gear. The good news is Annexster is now an improved vendor, which didn't help us here, because we had to go ahead and order it. But it's a big company. We use them a lot. So going forward, we will not have that problem.
Great. Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
Chair, I'll be recusing myself from the vote.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes four one, with Board Member Campbell recusing. Four zero. Four zero. One of these days, I'm going to get this right. Four zero, with Board Member Campbell recusing. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price for the roof replacement at Lake Weir High School, project two-four dash one two two?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. And I know you remain, Ms. Boombach, to share information. Save Dr. Gullett's voice.
Yes. So Lake Weir High School, we are looking to replace the roofs of buildings three, four, six, and seven, as well as the walkways. These roofs are very old. They are over twenty-two years old, and they require replacement. Some information about that, we are about to replace one hundred and forty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-six square foot of roof, which is quite a lot. And Lake Weir High School is also an old campus and added on several times, so it's a hodgepodge of roofs there. A little example, we have, most of them are gravel-surfaced coal tar buildup roofing system. I can go in more detail. And they are on several different structural systems, from precast concrete systems to metal deck to lightweight insulated concrete. So every roof is different, and we had to address each one of them differently. But we will place them all with a three-ply modified bitumen system over new insulation. We also had to increase the insulation requirements, because the code changed for the new energy code. So we will replace all that insulation. We have to increase the size of it to comply with the code. There's lots of H V A C equipment on those roofs, so that also involves then the, an H V A C contractor, all these curbs for those. contractor, all these curbs for those equipment. They have to lift the equipment. They have to rewrap the curbs. Sometimes they have to raise the curbs to stay code compliant now. Then they have to lower the equipment back down. There's a lot of electrical connection then as well, when they have to connect and disconnect. So there is a lot more than just roofing on there. We also will replace the gutters where needed and the lightning system protection on the roofs. Building four and six will be done during the summer because we have also an HVAC project out there, so the units on the roof will be replaced completely on those two buildings. And the contractor is the same contractor, so they are working together and coordinating that so that we don't do the work twice. And then we will open, that's why substantial completion is slated for August 8th. That's the same time that HVAC's project will finish. Right now, we are on schedule to start maybe mid-December to mobilize for the roofs.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion from the Board? And it's just for the community knowledge, it's 2.9 million, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Ms. Boombach, I just want to say thank you for going into such deep explanation. There was, in the community, a little bit of negative conversation floating around about the cost of this roof. And so I had asked Ms. Dobbins earlier in the week about just some questions, you know, that it's not a simple project, that it is complicated. And so I appreciate you taking the time to break it down for us and explain what some of those complications are. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other discussion from the Board? All right, hearing none. Yes, I read some of that too, and I thought, well, gosh, if you can do it for 350,000, you know, it'll become an approved vendor with Marion County Public Schools, because, yeah, who are you? All right. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five-zero. All right. D-26.9, may I have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price, GMP, for offsite improvements at new elementary school W, project two-four dash one-zero-one. May I have a motion, please? Moved by Board Member Cummings? Second by Vice Chair Conrad. And Ms. Boombach will defer to you.
So elementary school W is in construction right now, and there were several phases. If you remember, phase one was the early procurement. You approved that GMP, and they could get started ordering materials. Phase two was the GMP for the construction itself and the rest of the project. This is a phase three. It includes, there is no water and sewer on the site right now. And there is a small water line, which is residential, so that wouldn't give us enough water pressure for what we need, especially for the fire suppression system. So we needed to go a little further than just tying at the road. We have to go south to 66 Avenue Road, and we are probably installing around 3,700 linear feet of water line. This is also coordinated and permitted with the utility department of Marion County. And this connection is very critical to connect our water, our fire system, especially to that, to open the school on time. We're looking at two million, 74,943 dollars. Start of construction of that part of the project is December 2nd. And it also includes an additional 440 linear feet to go a little further down. Marion County Utilities has asked us to connect a little further down to a bigger water line to improve the flow and the pressure of the whole system, also helping the residents in that area. And we have broken out that cost, and we will seek to get the reimbursement from Marion County for that additional 440 linear feet.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion from the Board? Board Member Campbell?
Mine isn't really a discussion on this particular item, but it does beg the question, as we proceed with our new high school CCC, will we also be anticipating water line creation, et cetera? Because public utilities in that part of our county are at a premium for certain, and I'm certain the county would be grateful for us to continue to put in water lines.
Yes, so at the high school CCC, we're a little closer to the main water line, which helps, but we're also creating a loop to help with the water pressure. And it's very important to Marion County Utilities that we don't have fire pumps because they're creating quite an issue for them if they were to turn on. So creating a loop and having enough pressure without fire pumps helps them as well, and they are really appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the Board?
Look at us all working together, holding hands, singing kumbaya. It's wonderful.
Soon as they pay us back. As Ms. Boombach just said, we'll be getting reimbursement. Yeah, sounds great.
Anything else from the Board?
Ms. Boombach, I just want to continue to say thank you for your work in problem-solving. I was fortunate enough to sit in on part of a meeting with Ms. Straub, and some of these items were being discussed with a group. And again, it's very complicated, and it takes a team coming forward to work out and find solutions so that we can move forward. So just thank you again for your cooperation, your open-mindedness, and your willing to work as a team. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think this concludes your items, once we vote. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five-zero. All right. May I have a motion to utilize Florida Sheriff's Association contract, FSA two-four dash VEL three-two-point-zero? Excuse me, to purchase eight assorted vehicles for the Technical Services Department. May I have a motion, please?
A move.
Moved by Board Member Cummings?
Second.
Second by Board Member Campbell. And Dr. Gallet, information on this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Board. The cost of this item is approximately 477,000. Ms. Boston Ellis is going to come back and share with the Board how these purchases are utilized through this contract and how we are working through vehicle replacement as cost-efficiently as we can. Thank you.
And Ms. Boston Ellis, I'd like to compliment you for sitting near the podium, so you can just pop right up and tell us all about it.
She's wise.
She's not wasting time.
Thank you. Good evening again. Item 2610 was moved to discussion so that we could provide additional information. If approved, we will utilize the Florida Sheriff's Association contract to purchase eight vehicles for technical services. That's our maintenance department, carpentry, HVAC, paint, and plumbing. The estimated cost, as Dr. Gallet said, is about 477,000, and that's an average cost of about 60,000 per vehicle. These new trucks and vans will replace aged vehicles, which have many miles, parts needed that are hard to find. And please note that one of the vehicles will be purchased without a bed or a box. The bed on the disposed vehicle will be used on the new vehicle, thus saving the district approximately 24,000 to 25,000. Currently, we have 348 vehicles in what we call our white fleet, and that's all our vehicles other than buses. With an original cost of about 8.1 million dollars, the dates of in-service range from 1982 to 2024. So we have some pretty old vehicles. These vehicles are used by various departments, ranging from maintenance, custodial, facilities, food service, central warehouse, technology and transportation, vocational, and some of our schools. The departments assess every year their vehicles, along with input from our bus garage, who is responsible for maintaining our vehicles. And they work with them to determine whether they can, the vehicles can be repaired, or if parts are even available to make repairs. Requests are submitted to supervisors to evaluate, along with supporting documentation, justification, in order to be considered. Most of the vehicles are purchased out of capital project funds, and as you can see in the best practice, the new vehicles are replacing vehicles with over 93,000 to 130,000 miles. Our vehicles at that point are worn out and finding repair parts. Excuse me, it's becoming very difficult. So as you can see, we are getting the most out of the vehicles in the white fleet.
All right, thank you very much. And hats off to our mechanics for keeping a vehicle from 1982 still serviceable and on the road. Yeah. All right, any discussion from the Board? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Really appreciate the information that you provide. And sometimes, you know, we hear about it in the community as far as our technical service vehicles, and I think it's important to highlight, you know, that we really do wear them out before we replace them. So thank you again. All right. Moving on to D-26.11. May I have a motion to approve the sale of vacant land parcel two-eight-two-two dash zero-three-five dash zero-seven-seven?
Motion to approve.
Well, we'll say, motion by Board Member Campbell, second by Board Member Cummings. Attorney Powers, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. At our November 7th work session, the school board opened five bids for the purchase of the vacant land with the parcel number relisted. Upon review of those bids, the school board reached consensus to accept the bid from Hard Times Development LLC. A contract will be executed and entered into between the school board of Marion County and Hard Times Development, and the closing will occur on December 12th of 2024, provided the board votes in the affirmative.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Any discussion from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five-zero. Congratulations to the buyer. All right, moving on to D-26.12. May I have a motion to approve the rejection of all bids for the sale of the central warehouse?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member James?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Attorney Powers, do you have information you'd like to share regarding this item?
Yes, ma'am. Also on November 7th, 2024, at our work session, the school board opened four bids submitted for the central warehouse property. Upon review of those offers, the school board elected to reject all four bids by consensus. Upon the rejection of the four bids, the school board will move forward to alternative methods for selling the central warehouse property to ensure the sale is in the best interest of the public. So upon this form rejection of the four bids, the school board will begin the process of alternative methods to sell its real estate.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Is there any discussion from the Board?
I just want to confirm, alternative methods mean the best and final offers coming back to us next Thursday?
That would be one of the best, that's one, the best, excuse me. The best and final offers are one of the methods. Those best and final offers, if not, those still may lead to rejection, and if so, there are other alternatives as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the Board? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of rejecting this, all bids, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five-zero. Thank you. All right, moving on to our polled agenda item. This is C-23.1. May I have a motion to approve the construction of a covered play pavilion at Maplewood Elementary School? Change order one, work authorization one, project two-three dash one-two-three.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Board Member Campbell?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Conrad. Board Member James, you pulled this item and wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Board. So I was approached by this contractor a couple of weeks ago to discuss a greater issue regarding payment for these two projects, which is covered play at Maplewood and More Highlands. I thought it was a good opportunity, since this change order was coming on the agenda, to pull it so that we could have discussion, or I could share with you all the concerns I have. So collectively, the two covered areas together were just south of a million-dollar projects, collectively. To date, the contractor is still owed 561,086 dollars and nine cents. The projects are complete. The holdup primarily lies in that the project is a Davis Bacon project. And basically, Ms. Boston Ellis is going to maybe shake her head, or maybe not. That essentially means it's a grant-funded, a federally funded project, which means the money is, has to be used in a very unique, special way, and the time cards have to be very particular, and all of the details have to be very precise. When the contractor took the project, they didn't know it was a Davis Bacon project, and it wasn't properly communicated to them that it was. They wouldn't have taken the project otherwise. But by the time they first were informed, in November of '23, they had already signed the contract to build the covered play. So they requested opportunity to be compensated more for the time it was going to take to process those Davis Bacon paperwork, and that was denied. And over the course of the project, you know, they've done their best to meet the expectations, but it has whittled down to as little as 20 cents discrepancy in a time card. That is holding up 561,086 dollars and nine cents. So tonight is not the time to get into discourse about the weeds of why this is occurring, but my request to the Board is for Ms. Boston Ellis, Dr. Gallet, Attorney Powers, Attorney Blackman, whatever powers that need to be involved, have a discussion about being able to give a substantial drawl to a contractor and withhold whatever percentage is necessary to cover the gap of maybe a discrepancy that's in paperwork. But this contractor, who's sitting in the audience tonight, is a quality contractor in our community and has used his own money to cover the subcontractors that he needed to pay, because he has not been paid, over half a million dollars. This contractor, one of the subs that was used, went out of business because he couldn't get paid for the concrete that was poured. We have a problem, and if the problem is lying in the processing of paperwork for Davis Bacon and maybe this contractor's, depending on who you talk to, the narrative is whether the issue lies with the contractor or with our departments. Either way, we're not getting the paperwork processed, and there's not payment being made. So if it's possible for this Board to develop policy to say, we pay 95% and we withhold a certain percentage until we can whittle the difference that's left, but to not give payment for essentially 20 cents on a time card, it's just like, it's almost, you can't even believe it, but it's true. And so I really implore this Board and Dr. Gallet and Ms. Boston Ellis and Attorney Powers and Blackman to get together and have conversation about how we can figure out how to make this happen. They're very complimentary of Ms. Boombach and the relationship they've built with her and trying to figure this out and how helpful she has been. But failing to pay our contractors, a substantial part of what is left is not okay with me as a Board Member, and I want to figure out what policies we need to enact so that we can ensure we are following the guidelines that are set forth by the federal government with the funds and still trying to get the majority of the money to the contractors who've completed the work. The work is done, the children are covered in play, they are enjoying it. So for the purposes of tonight's 90-something thousand, which is included in the 561, essentially those additive change orders get into miscommunication from facilities to the contractor about, you know, where footers go and plans being wrong and all of that. Regardless, it needs to get taken care of and it needs to get approved. But we have some, we have some issues with Davis Bacon. This isn't the first contractor that's brought it to my attention, and I hope that as a Board we can problem-solve how to get them substantially paid and hold back whatever we need to hold back to ensure that we're covering our bases. So that's my request as staff. That's my request to the Board, if it implores you all to have a discussion about that. But I feel horrible that we have a local contractor who we owe over half a million dollars to.
All right. Board, any other discussion?
Attorney Powers, can you weigh in on that at all?
I cannot. I don't have any particular knowledge of this item.
Okay. Is that legally possible for us to do?
I'd have to, I'd have to look into that.
You really can't comment, okay. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Okay. Okay.
Other than just saying that, I, I concur with what Dr. James is saying. If there's something that we need to get our ducks in a row and get the right people in the right room to have the conversation, I completely agree with that.
I just want to find a solution. And I understand we have to cover our bases, but if that means that we gotta put the change orders differently or the, the draws differently so that we can get them pay the majority of the money and hold out whatever difference, and we still need to work on how we're effectively communicating that the project is a Davis Bacon project, because that has not been effectively communicated, and these contractors are taking the hit for it.
And no one wants to do the work and not get paid. And I don't want us to have a reputation of hurting local businesses. So that, I think that is something we do need to look at. Have Attorney Powers and whoever else look at what we need to do to rectify these situations. I don't like having our name outbad in the public that we're not paying.
Thank you, Board Member Cummings. And did you have something, Vice Chair Cummings?
No, I don't.
All right. Yes, thank you all. This is the, the first that I have heard about this. I, I do know that, especially when you get to the federal level, it almost makes me cringe. You know, that is the last thing that anyone wants to have to deal with is government red tape. That's, there's a reason why we don't have more affordable housing in this area. You know, it's, it's a nightmare. And, but anything we can do, because if it's brought to my attention that, yeah, we might be, be slow pay, but, but you get paid and our checks don't bounce, and it's worth waiting for, but there's a limit, you know, to how long you should be waiting. And, you know, the twenty cents on a time card, to me, that just screams government regulation. If it does, it's the same thing we went through with Esser, you know? A nightmare. So I would welcome how the collective heads can be put together to do anything we can to reduce the, the red tape without exposing us unnecessarily to any liability. Yes, Board Member?
Last thing I want to add, just for the record and the purpose of the conversation, the greater conversation occurring, no owner-direct purchase occurred on this either. So metal, a metal structure was purchased as the covered area, and no ODP was completed. The contractor didn't even know what ODP was when I brought it up, because it wasn't even asked for. So in our greater conversation about owner-direct purchase, there was tax savings that could have been captured with this project that were not.
Okay. And I know that there's been other projects where tax savings wasn't able to be captured because we didn't have the money. So there's a lot that still needs to be discussed on, on this. So if there's any further discussion? All right. Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously five zero. All right. We'll move on to Board Committee reports and concerns. There's an organizational meeting scheduled for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at eleven AM. And immediately following, there will be the Board of Directors Leasing Corporation Organization Meeting. There's also an attorney-client session scheduled for November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, scheduled for nine oh two AM or as soon as practicable thereafter. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for November first, two thousand and twenty-four, at nine AM. There is a special school board meeting scheduled for November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven thirty AM. All right, and we will go ahead and ask Ms. Martinez, anything from your seat for us tonight? Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We will ask our student board member, Mr. Carthick. Anything from your seat, sir?
Yes, Chair Power, thank you. I just want to emphasize some of the bills and items that are brought up this evening, the Film Derby, the Early Childhood Music Education Incentive Program, and the grant award for, from the Marion County Hospital District for the Fans Club. I believe that these three bills really emphasize how much our school district puts into outside education, all the extracurricular activities, and just an emphasis on developing the soft skills and just general skills that us students will be using lifelong. So I really appreciate that the school district is able to, early on in the student's career, enable them to learn these skills. And especially for the Fans Club, personally, as a Gen Z-er, we're definitely having a harder time with keeping our health in check, but I believe that these chronic illnesses can be inhibited with activities that are not just informative but also fun, such as gardening and promoting exercise and team, team-building activities. And also, I heard that our cafeterias are also being stocked with these produce items from these gardens. So not just the member of Fans, but also the general student population will benefit from these. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, and I continue to just appreciate your thoughtful and insightful comments. And is this your last meeting with us? No, there's more. Okay, good. I was like, no, this can't stop now. And we did miss Student Board Representative Martin this week, and he always has great comments that are just spot-on as well. So, so thank you, sir. We'll see you at the next one. All right, Board Member James.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I have a few items that I wanted to touch on, some updates and other things. First, I sent an email this morning, and we received correspondence as a board this afternoon regarding the pay for the hurricanes. I just wanted to touch base on this. I obviously read Ms. Moran's response, and the way that I read Board Policy eighty-four fifteen is not the way that it's being interpreted. And if, if I misunderstood it when we talked about it as a board last, then I take full ownership of that. Specifically, the statement that reads, "Both non-exempt and exempt staff members shall receive one and a half times the established rate in the board-approved schedule for such emergency services for all hours worked during the emergency or disaster in direct support of the sheltering operations. In any case, the pay received shall be considered extra compensation and shall not be part of the employee's base salary prospectively." I read that to say that when we do administrative weather pay for an emergency and all of our employees are paid to be home, which is something this board worked together on to establish, and I'm proud of. When an individual was working during the hurricane, they were being compensated time and a half for all of that time they worked, because everyone's baseline was to be paid to stay home. So working during that was time and a half for all of the hours worked. That is the way that I understood what we did, and I didn't go back to the board meeting where we discussed it. I know Ms. Moran shared that, and I can go back and reflect on my own participation and comments in that meeting. But I just want to go on record and say that if that is the case, I missed, I was unclear and misunderstood it. And as a board, I would like us to readdress the way the policy is being implemented, because the way I read that statement and the way I understand it, it says, "extra compensation and not, shall not be a part of the employee's base salary prospectively." To me, that is very crystal clear, but it seems as if I, for one, am misunderstanding it. And so I would like for an opportunity for this board to have a greater discussion about that policy specifically. God willing, and the creek don't rise, we will not have another hurricane this season. But before next season, I would like for this board to address this policy again, because if this is the way it's going to be implemented, which it seems like that is the case, I'm not in alignment with that, and that's okay, I guess. But I want it us to have a discussion before next hurricane season about it. So at a minimum, Attorney Powers, can it be put on our group of policies in the spring when we have a policy discussion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't know if anyone else had anything to say about that, but I can certainly keep going.
I think it's a good idea to, to discuss it. Yes, definitely revisit it.
Okay.
But that's just me. Anyone else?
I agree, because my understanding was the same as Dr. James.
So.
I guess, could I ask if the whole board, if it's a board policy and the board can, in consensus reads it one way, can, can we not just have it implemented that way?
I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I need to hear from Attorney Powers and have a chance to really take a good, hard look at it again myself.
Okay. Well, possibly then maybe in our work session next Thursday in the comments, Attorney Powers, could you possibly just provide us with some guidance? I just, it's a, it's a, it's a pretty steep amount of money for some employees who gave lots of effort during our last two hurricanes. And if the board all thought we were doing one thing, and it's being interpreted a different way, it is the board's policy. And so if we all are all in consensus about how we wanted it to be implemented, I would love to be able to retroactively address that. And we haven't paid for Milton yet, so we could really help our employees, and they would get money for the holidays potentially. So is it possible then in his comments on next Thursday's board work session, we could discuss it?
Give some guidance, sure.
Is that?
Sure, I can give you guidance as to interpretation, but that's largely gonna be based on pulling your own, you know, the actual time we put the policy in place, pulling your own discussion around it and reminding you of it. I can tell you that based on the intention behind it, the intention behind it was not to provide base pay and then one point five additional. It was to provide point five additional, not two point five times pay for working in the shelter. So if, if that is not clear from the policy, the board has the right to alter that. But.
Well, so next Thursday, then, maybe we can have a discussion about it. Okay, wonderful. Speaking of pay, the board had a session where we came to a group discussion about non-represented raises. And we talked about, this was in a shade session, about union negotiations?
We're not.
No, but non-represented isn't union negotiated?
I understand. Let's.
I'm not talking about the union negotiations.
I understand.
So I'm talking about non-represented?
Right. I just don't want to make reference to shade negotiations at all.
Okay, I'm just referencing the conversation. So we, as a board, asked if our non-represented could get their raise by Christmas. And we asked if that we could get it on the December twelfth meeting so that the non-represented could get their raise. And we haven't received an update about that since that meeting. So I know that the no, December twelfth meeting publication is Friday. So I'm wondering, is there an update on that? Is that going to happen? I know that it was important to me as a board member that our non-represented folks would get that, that raise. And so that's something that I wanted to get an update on, as we will not be together again before Friday when the publication is, you know, the submitted for publication for the December twelfth meeting.
I hear what you're saying. I just think that as a board, we need to continue to be very careful of, of anything that we discuss in a shade meeting and make sure that you run it by Attorney Powers before sharing publicly, and not just you, any of us. We, I think everyone sitting up here wants to support our employees as best as we can, but we just need to be careful.
Are we not allowed to talk about non-represented?
Not during a shade meeting, no. And I will say this, now that we've kind of, I, I need to clarify the record. In a shade meeting, we can't discuss things like that. However, if it comes up in the context of other union negotiations, which we also cannot discuss in public, then within that context, for comparison's sake, for example, then discussion is permitted in a limited fashion, which is what I ensure when we go to those meetings. So without reference to that, the appropriate thing would be simply to bring it up as, you know, as, as you did, except without the reference to shade session at all. Simply to bring it up as a new item and discuss for the first time publicly.
Well.
Because a request is not the same as board discussion, and so we have to be careful.
The request to staff was made for non-represented to receive their raise that was fit within the budget by Christmas. Is that gonna be able to happen?
How do you recommend we proceed, Attorney Powers?
You can make that request of staff.
If we have consensus publicly, which we have not had consensus publicly yet, which I think is what Attorney Powers is referencing. The other piece I think that you said was that the publication deadline was this Friday for a December twelfth meeting?
It needs to be submitted to staff so it can get in the, in the, in the hopper. The hopper, the timeline builds up to a meeting. So it all has to be submitted so then it can go to step one, step two, step three, so it can be publicized. So things that are, the timeline, the little, whatever you want to call it, progressive timeline, that's built every year for all of our meetings, states that this Friday is when all documents need to be submitted for review.
Understood. I, it certainly, if there was a, an item that the chair wanted to have in a, or that we all wanted to have, we could have additional conversation next Thursday during our work session if we had a, I'm not gonna call it a walk-on item, because December twelfth is a month away, so I, I think we still would have time. But I, I guess, I personally, if we're having discussion now, if we need to have additional discussion about it, maybe put it in the work session next Thursday. But if the team isn't prepared to comment on that tonight, I'm, I'm attempting to believe that they're not, since this was something that wasn't on our agenda or anything to be discussed publicly. But we do need to have the public conversation, because it was not a public discussion whenever we were in a separate meeting about negotiations.
I, I'd feel a lot more comfortable to just put it on and hush it out. Cummings?
We would be doing something that we traditionally have not done. We've always tried to do things systematically when it came to how we paid.
Which is why we really need to discuss it, not to interrupt, but.
Yeah. I just don't want us to get, we, we, we can, we're going somewhere we may not need to be going.
Well, let's go ahead and add it, Dr. Gullett, and then we can discuss it and share our views and see what we come to.
And I, I think that is absolutely fair to say, that the intent of all board members appears to be that when, when, whenever those additions or increases are going to be made, that they made and be made in an equitable and fair manner that is, that is then, you know, dispersed among all employees within their individual brackets, so that you're not having one group paid one time, one group paid another time. So that's really the extent of what we're talking about here, and that would be a matter of public discussion and a request for the board to make of the payroll department in order to do that. And, yes.
Okay. I'm just looking for, when I pulled up today, I got here a little early, and obviously all of the buses were here. So at some point, I'd like to receive an update on the transportation contract we approved. I don't know if there's a way we could get a public update on that at some point in the near future, where we are with hiring. I know they had a goal of hiring eighteen bus drivers. So how many they've hired, what that looks like and the impact for on-time arrivals.
That's in our weekly update.
I know that, but it doesn't appear that we've really made much movement in hiring bus drivers for that contract. So I would like to be able to have a public discussion as a board about what that looks like and if there are implications for transportation.
Sure. We can, we're, gotten pretty good at asking for updates from transportation.
So if we want to do that in comments, we can, but I would like for the staff to be able to be prepared to have all the numbers when we, those questions are asked. I wanted to ask, I wanted to acknowledge Principal Dobbs for Principal of the Year. She was recognized. She is, works tirelessly at East Marion with her team. She is a transformative leader and is incredibly deserving of Principal of the Year. As a board member, I wish I would have been able to be there. I didn't know about it, but I would have been there had I known. I think it's impactful for us to be able to be a part of the process. She is someone who has truly just dug in and done some amazing work in the last few years there, and it shows their attendance is hitting the nineties pretty consistently. It is, it's really tremendous what she has done. So, and last but not least, I know we had talked about this, and Ms. Boston Ellis and I have talked about it before, but I would love to see a work session on how the financing plan for sales tax, how we can bond, what that's gonna look like, so that we can, going into January and the new year, have a plan for how to execute. So that concludes my comments for tonight.
Thank you. And yes, Attorney Powers, also adding to that, we are going to need an oversight committee.
We are indeed.
And thank goodness we have a good model, hopefully, of bylaws to help structure that and, and get that done, too. So, yep, exciting things. All right, Board Member Cummings?
No comments tonight.
Okay. And Dr. Gullett, I almost hate to ask you, but, but I will.
Thank you, I'll be brief. I appreciate it. Board, just want to thank our veterans again. We had the opportunity to, to do a wonderful ceremony in honor of our veterans yesterday, but I want to thank specifically also our employees who have served, and we really appreciate their service. And just again, want to extend my congratulations to Ms. Dobbs and Ms. Carpenter, and thank them for their leadership. And congratulations to you.
Yes.
We're just so proud of you. It's an honor to sit next to you. Thank you.
Right, right. Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Board Member Campbell?
Sure, thank you. So we were mentioning our student board member, Sean Martin, absence this evening. Unfortunately, there was a scheduling mix-up on campus and he's volunteering this evening at the Don Ellen Stem and Literacy Family Fun Night. So we certainly have missed him this evening, but just wanted to give the board an update as to where he was. Also, earlier this month, I had the privilege of attending the marksmanship competition. I watched some of our Bellevue High School old and new shooters compete and had the privilege of watching our very own Sandeay Carthick help the Vanguard Precision Team lead them on to victory. So that was a pretty fascinating couple of hours spending watching the Vanguard Marksmanship Competition and had several, several different teams from around the state who came to Vanguard to participate. So congratulations again for leading Vanguard to victory. He's pretty, pretty good, y'all. I'm just going to say. That Precision Team is no joke. His whole gear and the whole, he's really talented. Okay, moving on. Tonight we approved rezoning for elementary schools on the south side to create zones for elementary school W and X. We've already referenced a social media post about something else that caused some confusion or something. And I'm going to reference one that also was on, out today on a parent's page. It was not on a Marion County Public School social media page, but it was out that caused some families confusion. The statement was made that basically if you have kids in all of these different schools, then your students are all going to be zoned to these new schools, and that is not accurate. So I want to assure families in impacted schools, if you have not received any notification that your zoning is going to be changing for your student, it's not going to be. So we have been communicating extensively with the families in those areas for community meetings and other kinds of communication through Skyward or Skylert. And so if your student attends one of those schools, whether it's Saddlewood or Bellevue Elementary, Bellevue, San, like all the different schools that are impacted, if you have not received communication, chances are you are not going to be impacted. It's not every student and every school, but some of those zones will be. Tonight, we also approved perfect audits for Hammett Bowen Jr. Elementary. I know, when I go first, I get it before Vice Chair Conrad. Perfect audits for Hammett Bowen Jr. Elementary as well as Spar Elementary, so kudos to those teams. That is incredibly important for us to be not only managing our money collectively that we see, that we oversee from the board, but also that all of our school teams are managing their money appropriately. So grateful for that. Also grateful that the opportunity for the Bellevue High School ACE program just got back last night from their civil rights field trip. This is now my second child who's been able to go on that trip. After touring a campus of Florida State University, they then traveled through Selma, Montgomery, Birmingham, and wrapping up in Atlanta yesterday. And it just is a wonderful, wonderful field trip. So kudos to the Bellevue team for putting that together every year and the things that the students learn. It's just things they'll never be able to learn elsewhere. The opportunities they're given is just, it's great, the museums and different engagements they have. I was disappointed to miss yesterday's Veterans Day program, as I said. Thank you, board members, for sharing all the social media posts because I was able to see that too. And so thank you for all of the videos and the footage that was out about that. But as you know, I was attending the first time as a board member for the Florida School Music Association. And so I just wanted to give you a couple of tidbits from that. It was great to know that we are one of the districts that does have a fine arts coordinator. Not all districts do. And even some of the districts that are really large, representatives who are also on the Florida School Music Association say, I don't know who that person is and I've worked in my district for 20 some odd years. And anyway, so we have, it was great to be able to email Ms. Hutto and say, hi, I am in this meeting right now and I wanted to talk to you about this. And so a couple of things. First of all, if you weren't already aware, the governor did sign into law this past year that there is now a fine arts seal opportunity that students can earn on their diploma if they reach certain criteria. That just got signed into law in April. And so it's for students in class of 2025 and beyond. So the new fine arts seal, we do have a little bit about it on our website already in our fine arts department. But there's even more information that Ms. Hutto is working on getting out. I know it just went out to guidance counselors last week from what I hear. And so we'll be getting lots of information on that for students who might be in the fine arts and want to achieve that seal now that they could get on their diploma. But there were two things that FSMA is putting on their legislative platform, and you know that's my, like, I love legislative platform things. So one of the things they're going to be requesting this year is to get acceleration points for schools that have students who receive the fine arts seal. So that in addition to all the, like, if, certainly if you have a student who's getting ACE credits or AP or that kind of thing, and they're already getting the points for those, then they wouldn't. But if you do have a student who's getting a fine arts seal and may not be getting acceleration points elsewhere, then their request, at least of the legislature this year, that they add that. And another thing they're trying to ask for is that they could also have students who are participating in at least two or three years of a music program within their secondary school that they could get the HOPE class waiver, just like we have the waivers for those students in JROTC as well as Junior Varsity and Varsity Athletics. So those are two things that the Florida School Music Association is putting on their legislative platform. I thought that would be interesting for us to see as we go up to Tallahassee in February, as we've just scheduled. And just to see how we can follow those along and potentially even, you know, encourage legislators to consider those. And with that, I'll leave one final comment. I told you last time we were together about a conversation I was having with Commissioner Matt McLean about the possibility of a joint appropriation for a special needs shelter. Had a conversation with Commissioner McLean today. So just to update you, what was shared as, we have a plan, we have a plan, or it's not a plan. The plan is actually many years down the line. If a private entity within our community chooses to build something in the future, they would be including a special needs shelter component to that future construction. But that has not even been confirmed that that private entity is going to build the facility. So I just wanted to share that first. Secondarily though, in considering an appropriation, so the county commission has already approved and voted upon their legislative platform. We essentially have as well, but we did leave the open door. As I was speaking with him further, because we don't fully have a real concrete plan on what it would look like, I certainly have some ideas of what I think that we could make that look like. If we were to have a public conversation at some point about combining schools on the north side, I know that's been a brief conversation, not fully ready to have that conversation. We're not anywhere near that. But if we were, it might open up at least a land opportunity. But we are not really close on that conversation yet. And if we didn't have real solid movement on that within the next four to six weeks, hitting a legislative appropriation this cycle is probably not going to work. What we can do though, because committee weeks for the 2026 session will begin in the fall of 2025, that we as a board can start having real concrete conversations to say, what would the special needs shelter look like in our community and what would our, or could our role be? And again, if we were to have a property somewhere that might work or if we wanted to say, we will operate XYZ of whatever this might be. I just, I wanted to give you that update to say, I'm not certain that we're ready for an appropriation conversation this year about a special needs shelter, but I would like to continue the conversation and for us to have real concrete conversations about if there would be opportunities for us to participate in a land swap, something like that as a part of that. Because if the state does consider an appropriation for something like a special needs shelter, they certainly would be looking for participation from the municipalities and potentially the school board as well from financial positions. Donation of land, donation of other resources and so forth that potentially could help with that. So my recommendation, just since we had the conversation last, my recommendation is that we continue our conversation, but not consider it for an appropriation for this legislative cycle that because committee weeks are starting in January and we don't really have a real plan yet. So, but I would like to say, let's figure something out to have a plan for committee weeks in the fall of 2025 so that we potentially could work with our local municipalities on how we could get that and get it built quickly. And that wraps up my comments.
Great, thank you, Board Member Campbell, always for your diligence in that area. All right, Vice Chair Conrad?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. And so one of the silver linings is when you go second to last, you get all these things marked off of your list because other board members have shared them. So my list is much shorter now.
Your thunder's turned to drizzle.
Yes. Very quickly, I just want to say that Golden Apple observations have started. And what an exciting time it is in our district. It's always inspiring to go in and see the great work that's happening in classrooms across the district. And if you are interested, the gala is going to be February 1st. So I just want to encourage and invite everyone to attend because it is a fabulous evening. I don't know how Megan and Kevin do it, but every year it gets just a little bit better. It's just always a great, fun-filled evening.
Have a location yet?
Is it still going to be at the Riley? Okay, at the Riley.
Riley.
Yes. So just sharing that, what a great opportunity. I also want to say thank you for our teams. I actually don't know who all is responsible for the Veterans Day program, but it was just fantastic. It brought tears to my eyes. It was inspiring. It was honorable. It was memorable, all of those things. And the students of Marion County that performed really made it that much more special. All the way from kindergarten to our high school students, we had elementary students. It really was just beautiful. And I was excited for our Veterans Park because I don't know what the count was, what the attendance was, but that's the most people I've seen in attendance at our Veterans Park. And so they had an unveiling the night before of a new statue. And so there was a lot of attention brought to that. It was, the title of that is "Family," which was fit in nicely with Veterans Day yesterday. And so just thank you, Mr. Christian. I know that, you know, you had a lot to do with that program and it's a lot of work. And he rallies our schools and our students. And so, and we had staff. We also had staff members that spoke. Sorry, not remembering every single piece, but it is a beautiful event. And so thank you again for all of your work and getting that together. I actually went to the groundbreaking of the Freedom Public Library expansion this morning. And I went because I am passionate about literacy. And so having the expansion of the library, it's going to be three times the size that it currently is, is really exciting, especially in an area that we are feeling on the school side so much growth. So I was super excited. They had staked out where and how far the addition would go out. It was really something to look forward to. So in 2026, there'll be a nice, big library down in the southwest area of town. They had a great community turnout. And one of the speakers was having us do a little exercise in envisioning this great library. And when Chair Stone spoke, I did get the giggles because she, it was really hot. And she told us to envision the air conditioning. So I appreciated her sense of humor in that very hot moment. But it was a very nice event and I'm excited about that addition to our community moving forward. And I think, Chair Thoreau, I think that wraps it up for me. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, that Veterans Day celebration, it just, an honoring just gets better and better. And we, you know, have our own changes coming up on this board pretty shortly. And I just wanted to take a moment to share my gratitude for the honor and opportunity to have served as your chairwoman for the, of the school board these past 12 months. During this time, the school board has catalyzed a great run of historic successes. Fiscal stewardship and policy are the primary functions of any school board. And I'm incredibly proud that the conservative oversight of our board, combined with the wise operational direction of our first appointed superintendent, the tireless Dr. Diane Gullett and her amazing staff, very notably our award-winning finance department, resulted in earning the Fitch rating that made it a solid business decision to borrow over $300 million that are already directly benefiting students and families. We've broken ground on two new elementary schools. And very soon, we intend to break ground on the also greatly needed new high school. We were successful in advocating for and ultimately earning a unanimous yes vote from our county commissioners in support of reinstating impact fees on developers for the first time in 13 years. Thank you to our county commissioners for recognizing that supporting our public schools is both a privilege and a shared responsibility. More highlights include our fantastically supportive community, overwhelmingly supported a half-cent sales tax to ensure that so many of our old schools' maintenance needs will be met and more infrastructure can be built to accommodate our growing student enrollment in facilities that are safe, functional, and appealing. Thank you to former Marion County School Board Member and Community Leader Beth McCall and Kevin Shealy from the CEP, along with newly re-elected and current board member Allison Campbell for stumping on the campaign trail and at multiple community meetings to share your voices that help propel us to victory. I'd also like to thank News Channel 6 for their investigative reporting pieces that spotlighted the needs our schools have. Thank you to all the media who shared and amplified our ask for community support. And my gosh, did our community respond with a resounding yes. Each current board member sitting up here contributed to the support and success of these initiatives. And I thank you individually and collectively for your vision and commitment to getting all of them across the finish line. Finally, as my time, as your board chair draws to a close, I encourage you all to keep your focus on the kids and continue to put your primary commitment towards helping each and every student succeed. Thank you all and God bless you. And there being no further business to discuss, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Vice Chair Conrad, second by Board Member Campbell. All of those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. We are adjourned at 7:57 PM. We made it before 8:00.